Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the planning board meeting for Monday, August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three. It is seven fifteen P M. Can I please have everybody stand up with their belongings?
Pledge of allegiance to the Latin of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first thing on the agenda is the continue public hearing on special permit number three ten and site plan approval number sixty-eight for Calwell and Hills. Uh, see, under section three point two eight in section eight of the town of Warren zoning bylaws, the applicant is seeking a special permit to remove earth material from the property located at Gilbert Road, Warren. This parcel is also known on assessors map number five lots twenty-two through twenty-five, which is in the rural district. Copy of the application may be inspected in the office of the planning board or town clerk's office during normal business hours. All right. Welcome back, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you for your time again.
All right. So we actually got an update on this one?
Yes.
From legal and legal said that it would require a variance. To get the variance, you need to go through the Z B A. To get it. Um, and that's for the amount of earth you're looking to remove before you reclaim it. Okay. In order to do that, because the bylaw is specific, you would have to actually have um given a variance approved before doing.
Right? So you're uh you're saying variance.
For the reseeding, for the putting.
Yes.
Once you close up, sell, whatever you call it. Um, and you're gonna move to the next one. Get a variance so you don't have to put soil and vegetation.
So if we were to everything else except for the seven acre operating area in the access road to the operating area, then it could be a variance.
Say that again.
If you were to blow and see the origin that's required by the bylaw on everything that's open outside the proposed seven acre operating area, then that would be part of the violation.
Yeah, because that would fall within. Is it seven? Or six?
Why? I mean, the worst case is they say no and you have to do it anyway. Yeah, in fact, I would ask for a variance until until it's complete. You don't wanna like every time you move, you don't wanna get another variance. They may just grant you a blanket one until the you know, your project is done.
We need with the
zoning board of sales.
Yeah.
So what would that do for this term? Would that be a condition that you couldn't operate until we had the variance? Or?
Or chose not. Well, we we couldn't do a permit. We can't even do anything until you have the variance on that part. We'd require you to close it unless you add a variance from them.
Is that right? Or can we just give them the permit and then either they get the variance or they don't?
Yeah.
And then they have to.
He's following my thinking as you're speaking. Just I'm following his line of thinking. So if we decide not to because, you know, we're all working together here. Since you sent me the letter, honored it, nothing's happened up there. Honored your request and and therefore again, if we're going forward, we were to choose to go for the variance. We right now, we choose to reseed it.
Okay.
Okay, now we choose to receive it. If we choose to go to a variance, we would not continue until we got the variance.
Correct.
Right? Right? That all with the all with the uh working together with the planning board.
Well, I was understanding when you were here last time that you it's a quarry and you don't want to reseed it because you're gonna go deeper and I understand that.
Yes, but if they don't and they just say we're gonna do a variance.
What you suggested.
They might. Keep it open.
Yes, and we have we have discussed that. We lowered that. That was brought up the last time.
Yes, they'd have to close it up.
It's kind of be on our system.
So we wanted to continue with the permit is see the permit up and subject to your vote tonight. I mean, I can just throwing this out here, we have good choice to either say we're gonna close out everything except for seven acre operating area. When they choose to go for a variance, they come back for a modification of the special permit afterwards. So everything we're closing it. Then if you decide to go for a variance, you can come back and ask for a modification. Or you say you can operate if you get a variance, you can put a condition on the permit to say that you have to get a variance before you can operate it.
Yeah, but I think the easier way is saying you're gonna close it up.
And go back to the.
And then come back with a variance.
And then won't.
I you just can't open up anymore until you've closed because you have to go by the what the bylaws are saying. You can't open up new areas until you closed it up.
Yeah, so they wouldn't operate under the permit that you have until they either close it out or come back to you with variance.
Yeah. That's, I mean, following your line of thinking, just to I'm right there in that line of thinking of how to proceed. And still and and satisfy the board.
Right.
And they don't get the variance, but they have to operate.
Yeah, you'd have to close up anyways.
Right.
You know, and if you're gonna continue the permit, you'd have to close up the area.
So we would issue a decision assuming you're gonna close it. And then you would come back at a later time.
If we choose to.
If you choose to, and then you would do they need them? Do we need to modify the permit? Can we even do that? Is that something?
You can modify it.
Okay, so you come back.
Still have to go through. I hear you.
Yeah. So because you're doing a change in condition. And you'd you'd have a variance that would be approved if you you were to get that and you'd wanna change in your conditions.
Yeah.
You'd make a motion to change the conditions and accept the variance. And.
Yeah, and procedurally we would be able to be able to go directly to the Z B A to request the variance.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, right. Oh, yeah, I'm just just. You can call up um Carrie Schmitz, I think, secretary or the vice chair, I don't know how. Uh, she's also the tax collector and you just I don't know when they need. I think they need sort of as needed. So you know, maybe, I don't know, a couple of weeks they could need. They just, you know, figure out.
They have posted it.
Yeah, post it.
Their schedules.
And it's similar to last, you know, they make it. They would close their, if it's a hearing, then they would come up with a decision, issue a decision. You know, take a vote. So it's similar to this.
Okay.
Then you know.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So we're gonna continue with the permit tonight.
Yes.
And move forward. Okay, all right.
You wanted to start from the beginning and go through.
Well, you went through everything, but basically we stopped because you said you were gonna keep the whole site open. And at that point, we knew that triggered a variance. And we had to get clarification on that. We did through legal. And they did say, yes, you do need a variance and you would have to go through the Z B A because they're the authority for it.
So some of the procedures, we think the modification of our application say that everything under the seven acre, the access road in the seven acre operating area would be closed out according to that verbally or in some way.
Yeah, we we would actually not falling with the.
Well, I'm just saying that our application shows it all open. So what I'm saying is.
I don't know if you would do the access road. I mean, you gotta get that.
No, the access road would be open. So basically, the access would stay open in seven acre. And and everything else that's in this area prepared is not been vegetated, trees, it's not already closed out. So do we ask you for permission to do that? Or do you put in a condition that everything has to be closed out except the access road?
Yeah. Seven acre area. Yeah, we were just probably referenced an paragraph that says.
It would be by the bylaw, just making sure that you're abiding by the bylaws as written.
Did not be giving anything else.
Because, you know, we can't, we can't change what's in the bylaw or say, hey, you know, you're good, keep it all open, you know, do what you gotta do. We have to tell you you can't open up anything new or move forward with anything new until you did close it up and reseed it and reclaim that area. So. All right. Do you guys have any more questions?
Yeah, the only question is, were there conditions? Did the permit that has expired, did you have conditions on that permit? That that you are trying to apply to any permit? So for example, on a couple gravel pits, we've had storage of road grating.
There there was also a yeah, an allowance to allow road billings to be stored there.
Okay.
We did ask them for that, you know, the government could be able to.
Okay, that'd be a store. All right, so was there anything else, Tom?
I did just a clarification as far as the operating area. This being the operating area where the active removals happening. Are they allowed to have any equipment or stockpiles outside of there? That it would.
The operating area is your removal area. So.
It's the bylaws there.
I don't think the bylaw.
It doesn't. It just says you could have.
There is no definition.
Right.
Of an operating area in the bylaw, but.
It's staging.
Well, specifically, the wording for operating is I've always assumed that the operating area is the earth removal area. There's some staging area or other area as there always has been and is in there was a citation, the Bible always by yeah, the operating area is where you remove your.
How much space are you looking at? To have.
Outside the.
Oh, outside the seven.
Maybe an extra acre.
Yeah.
We what happens is we have finished product, the trucks come in and get we hate to have the finished product next to where we're excavating and all the equipment's running around because it just causes compute and it's another place for an accident, safety. M show controls the quarry or us, the government has us do it that way. So sometimes it takes a little more room than what we used to, but basically in the area, mechanics show up, they wanna have a place to work on the stuff. Not where we're mining outside that area, you know. So.
Yeah, so 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 an acre.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we could designate an acre.
All right. B J, since you're here.
Yes.
Take your mind. Outside air, their actual area of work. We don't have anything in the bylaw saying that they can have an area of operation. Is the area of operation considered inside? Where they would actually be doing their the work for the quarry? Or can we have one on the outside of it? As a separate designation?
I've always known that if it's not stated, it's not allowed. You can't, you can't create something, you know, it it sounds like, and I came into this late, so my apologies. This is for the quarry, right, for the gravel pit? And and what exactly are they asking for?
Well in this area.
Yeah, yeah. Of the quarry or the gravel pit.
A seven acre.
Okay.
In the in the bylaw.
All right.
Right? Of earth removal area.
Right. That's covered in Sony bylaws.
For the first removal area.
Correct.
So so or what they state as an operating area. There is no definition in the bylaw of an operating area. But to be able to operate safely, one of the things you will look for is to still move and be able to, for example, repair a tire on a loader.
Okay.
Move a piece of equipment out so you can move it something else in. You knock in that. It's all about safety.
Right.
We have M show.
You have seven acres there, so you can pull over anywhere and change the tire.
Well, yeah, well, it's not as simple as that.
Okay.
Because of the equipment that is used in the processing takes up a fair amount of acres as well.
Okay. So you want something that is what's set forth then.
Well, okay, well, maybe, David, so again, to your point.
Right.
It's not stated quite often.
It's a gray area.
It's a gray area. And we've always assumed in in the business, in the industry, the operating area is the where you remove the material.
Right.
So, for example, this area, there'll be, there is, it's only coming up here at the higher elevations where the material is. This is hard. Now, nothing's coming out of here. This is where we'll be with equipment, motors, things like that.
Okay.
So the the question was, would it be able to, if it's wanting to clarify, be able to perform day-to-day operations, maintenance, or or whatever things that there's an area, for example, that we don't have to see. So we can operate there, drive around.
But if you're see what confuses me and and you have to allow me to you know, in the building code, if you're gonna put a maintenance area where you're doing repairs, changing tires, oil, stuff like that, this could this could build into that, then you would have to have a designated area. I I'm not sure I understand what it is you're asking for. If you're asking for to be able to do maintenance on heavy equipment out there, that's not gonna be allowed without certain regulations that are followed in the building code.
There won't be any buildings there. We have a truck, mechanic shows up with his truck, all his tools around his truck.
I see. Okay, but that's what I see where I'm trying.
Yeah, there's no, there's no, there's no.
I need to turn the light on in the room so I understand what you're saying.
There's no building.
Right. But you wanted to maintenance on a.
So it actually looks like it actually includes it all in one.
You wanted to do maintenance on equipment in the gravel pit as well, is what you're saying.
Well, yeah, they come up and they'll fix a tire.
Right.
Add some oil.
And that can be done anywhere on that. So I go up, I'm not sure what they're asking for.
Well, they want us to move seeds the whole area except for seven acres. And if we low and seed areas, we're gonna have to park on and do something that's just gonna disturb the areas we low and seed. You know, so eventually, when we're done, it's all low and seeded.
Right, right.
We don't wanna low and seed it and then rip it all up again.
Right.
Or some.
I see. Oh.
There's there's gonna be an access road going.
But it doesn't say staging.
Yeah.
Eight one eight three one. It says the location of law on which it is supposed to carry out earth removal operations. It's the only thing I see. And it looks like it just.
So can I read this one? Okay, so we have, there's a provision in here, eight dot six dot thirty.
We have a zoning, this is zoning.
Yeah. So such other reasonable requirements consistent with the provisions of this chapter and such rules and regulations as the board may adopt are under included but not limited to grading, seeding and planting, fencing necessary for public safety, methods of removal, location and use of buildings and other structures, hours of operation, routes, transportation of earth removal, control of drainage and disposition of waste and spent removal operations. So I think this gives us some leeway to be able to say, okay, you can allow this. I think what would be good, though, is to have it on the plan. Then carve out, if you want an acre, everybody is agreeing with me, but put it on the plan. So when B J goes to inspect in a year from now or whatever, she knows here's where your equipment area is. And it shouldn't be over here, right?
Okay.
I would say.
Yeah, that would work. That would work, yeah.
The roadway that's gonna come in here is coming up this way. So we're working back here, so there's gotta be a road forty or fifty feet wide right through the middle of us anyway. It's not gonna get low and seeded. That'll be our access road.
Okay.
But it's still gonna be stipulated that you know and we know that we're not gonna low and seed that access road. Even though it's outside of seven acres, you know.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of, yeah.
My goodness.
That makes sense.
So could we, could we, as a condition for tonight, as a condition, we have to provide where the location is on the map.
I think that's.
And where we can go to work. I can facilitate.
Yeah, I think that's the way to do it because then it's it's formal and official.
Right.
And even I would put the access road because you're gonna wanna go to the Z B A and say here's what we would low and seed minus our access road and our.
And that way, if someone else can get a new commissioner, that person know, doesn't have to get in game. It's all laid out in black and white in that way.
Yeah.
So just. We have to give specific information also. If you guys are gonna be using crushers?
Yes.
On our side.
We listed some equipment in the end of application.
Because we'd have to give that special, special consideration when doing these special permit.
It would be in the conditions, right?
Yeah, the conditions saying if it's.
In the application.
Yeah. No, I'm just making, when we're talking about conditions, we just gotta make sure we you know, if we're gonna allow that, we allow that too. So it's on there because it specifically says in the bylaw that you we have to clarify if you can have it.
Oh, crushers and similar equipment are allowed, only if specific specifically referenced in the special permit.
Yeah.
Okay, so we just have to put it in there. Was it in your current? It's part of the permit? Oh, okay. Okay.
So if I understand you correctly, you're gonna ask for revised plan be submitted, not you're not gonna continue the hearings with the revised plan. You'd be happy with showing the one acre outside of seven plus an approximate access road, just so you know when you're inspector go to look at it. I want to, we're talking about putting one acre over here like this, which is what we would add to the plan I have the site without. Get one acre.
Yeah.
And the access road kind of coming into the area like that, which will have the plan on such, but we don't want to be.
No worries. Yeah.
So there's nothing else that's seen. If you like, it gives us some leeway, but. And I think if we, when we do the special permit, because you're not moving the crushers, right? You don't move them around, you just leave them in one area.
In this particular instance, I believe that the crushers will stay very uh uh immobile, that once they're set up.
Yeah.
To 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 address this, this B J.
Right. So you bring the material to, you bring the material to the crusher, not the.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Sometimes we take it apart, move them out of the way, so when we blast, we don't blast stuff off the crusher.
But it's pretty much steadily in one area. And that's where you're looking at doing your operations area type thing.
Yeah.
You're looking at the one acre.
Well, that. Well, that would be for parking equipment and maintenance.
They, there might be a stockpile there, but but that is the the earth removal and the processing of the material will be taking place within that op- operated area.
And that was on the last permit they had heard.
Yes.
It was all laid out that way too.
Yes.
Okay.
And none of this equipment is abandoned or unused equipment, correct?
Correct.
It's all used.
Right.
Because the bylaw specifically forbids abandoning or having unused equipment. So.
There may be a there will be a spare there something there in case something ever does.
But it's all used equipment.
So to be.
It's all being used.
All available and not.
It's not gonna be abandoned. It's not gonna be.
Correct.
Talk to them once you're.
Yeah, there's no buildings, no neighbors. They don't have to worry about any of that stuff. You don't have any neighbors close to where you're working.
Um, yeah, you do. Um.
No, I'm sorry, ma'am. Uh, can you identify who you are?
Nancy Roy. I live on Gilbert Road. They've been good neighbor. I like even when they were running it before, there was an issue where they were starting up, trucks were starting up outside the operational hour. I believe it was John that I spoke with and it was handled um pretty quickly, but we can hear it. And I'm like, I'm okay with that as long as we're stick. I know where the operational hours are and we're sticking to it. Um, my biggest concern is uh when they were blasting originally, the shockwave scared the like a lot of us, shall we say, like you could actually see it come through. Somebody came in and brought equipment.
One second.
And then um we did, we were then given the opportunity to be notified by the fire department that they're gonna blast, which was great. Except for if you call me at ten and say they're blasting at noon and I'm at work, like, it doesn't always work out. So like one of the things that I would like, and that may not be part of the permit, it might just be an agreement that we can make. I mean, we need a little more notice than that, you know what I mean? Like you, we we did, I think we got a call most times, it was blasting when it happened, but if somebody called my house today and said we're gonna blast, or one time we just blasted a half an hour ago that, you know, the fires, you know, that's not helpful.
So how how soon do you know when you're gonna be blasting? Is it within forty-eight hours or?
Twenty-four anyway. Forty-eight to start with, then it gets down to twenty-four and then gets down to that morning, but we call.
Or you suspect you're gonna blast. So I I you you sit there, you don't just sit there and say, oh, I'm gonna blast tomorrow, call up the company. You're you're gonna sit there, schedule in a week out and say, hey, we're gonna be blasting on Tuesday of next week.
Yeah.
You know, so you know at least forty-eight hours prior. Then you start getting more fine, like, okay, weather's good, everything's good, twenty-four hours, it's most likely gonna happen.
Blaster won't show up and start drilling holes unless we show them a permit that we got. So we have to get it every, all the ducks are ro, and he shows up, they.
And how soon do you have to have that?
The morning of, but we call the day before, you know. So sometimes there's a lapse between the fire chief and police chief and phone calls getting out like we talked the last time. The only thing I can do is call in plenty of time and then it's out of my hands, you know.
We talked about this at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Where we, we were in control of those calls in the very, very, very beginning. And then we were asked by the fire department to stop and they were gonna take over and handle those calls.
Well, I could see where people might get upset if you call as a company and that kind of takes it off the view if Art the Tom does it, you know? Cause I don't wanna, I don't want anybody saying that, that Dave Callahan keeps on calling me, telling me he's blasting and the guy's a jerk or whatever, or he's rude to me. You don't want any of that stuff or anybody ever saying anything like that. If the fire chief calls and says, hey, then it's on us. It's on the town.
But I've gotten a call from the fire chief two hours before and blast. And I, I would prefer, if possible, more notice than that.
So that's the problem is it calls out timely.
I'm sorry.
The call, the calls aren't timely.
Right. And that, that, that's my big concern. Like, it's a, it's not that, but when the first blast, like, it's, it's disconcerting.
But if you're passing the information on to the fire chief. Then you gotta tell him.
And the fire chief's not calling.
We're, we're providing as much notice as possible.
If he hangs up the phone from me and he gets a five alarm fire or an ambulance call, I'm sure he forgets what I told him. He's gonna go to the emergency and then, oh, shit, I forgot the call.
Just wanted to make it clear to her clarification in the last meeting, we had originally asked for a modification of the Saturday operating hour, but after discussion, we, we said we could move that change and just be following, yeah, operating hour.
Yeah, eight AM to four PM.
Correct.
And then it's Monday through Friday from seven AM to five PM.
We're not, no longer asking for that modification.
And then no work on Sundays or holidays.
And, yes.
And holidays includes Juneteenth too. So, Juneteenth is a holiday, so.
That's like three years ago.
So just remember that one.
Can you repeat the operating hours? I'm sorry.
The operating hours are Monday through Friday, seven AM to five PM. Saturday, eight AM to four PM. No work on Sundays or holidays. So. And that's in the bylaw, deserving bylaw, earth removal.
So we could get with the fire chief and just talk to him. But I would say, like, ma'am, if you're still having a problem, then come back to us. And then maybe we can talk to the fire chief again or maybe look up at you or something, but come, come to us, talk to us. That would be the best way to do it.
But we should be.
Yeah, we definitely can. We have, yeah.
So the other thing that was brought up is maybe we can set up a town alert.
We could, yeah.
Set up a town alert, so that would actually be on on the residents to be able to sign up for the town alert. And anytime there was gonna be some blasting that was gonna happen out there, they would just push out the town alert. And that's instantly instead of the chief calling each person and it documents. So if you forgot, you missed a call or whatever, it's right over your phone. And you just look at it and say, oh, I, I got an alert saying that there's gonna be blasting in two days, you know, from these times. So it would actually.
But you, my town sets up down the road.
Yes.
Oh, no, no, you wouldn't do it.
I'm just looking at a solution, see if residents might prefer that. So. Yeah, and that would, that would be something the fire chief would just send out. Anyone would just have a thing saying that blasting is gonna be done, do a quick little note and then send it out. And it takes them like five minutes to do.
But, and it goes to everybody who subscribes. So we do a separate group.
That would be something to talk with Derek. I know Derek was hinting about it and talking about it, that that's something that could be put out. Where they would have a specific group for that.
Yeah, it doesn't really need to go to the general public.
No, we don't need eleven, we don't need eleven hundred people knowing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unless they want to.
But no, yeah, a separate subgroup would be best.
We, we, we can look into that, see if we could better notify you. But they're, they're going to get their blasting permit, they're notifying the fire chief, and I think town is dropping the ball on that and that's kind of on us. And we're gonna try to do better to notify the residents for that. That's on us. I apologize for that. So we'll do better on that one. Was that your only concern, ma'am?
As long as they stick to the hours of operation, like I said, the first time it felt wasn't happening. It was, but it wasn't like the trucks had started seven and then all of a sudden they were starting at like five oh seven and, you know, but that got handled as well. And if they stay off the road, it's still a road disaster.
Yeah, and we talked about.
But yeah, we don't want anybody to do that.
You guys are good with that? Working with the neighbors?
We do. I'm trying to.
Within reason. Do you have any other questions? Yes, I'm good. All right. And how's it?
Putting the clothes, the hearing.
Let's just make sure we cover all of this. So are you guys good with any questions about the crushing material or anything, the special conditions that they asked for? Cause they asked for the crushers to be there, which was on their old permit.
Right.
Okay. Do you have any questions about that?
No, no.
Okay. You removed the hours of operation as a consideration, so that there's no change to that. So we have no questions about that?
Blowing the road.
And you want milling's.
Yeah.
Um, you have to add that on there. And then.
When I, just going out here, staging or whatever.
Equipment staging area. Is that, that's all you're using it for, is equipment staging, right? Do you guys think of anything else that's, that shows your line?
I just have one question about the, the bone because it's a special permit, so you need a super authority. Yes. Usually a five member, is that current? So we're just, we don't wanna, wanna have you have to vote. We're gonna get one. Oh, so we have.
No, we're not gonna vote yet.
Okay.
Cause we, we have very little time to get the thing together. So we were gonna close. And then what we do is have another meeting where we talk about the conditions, go over the document. We're gonna need the revised plan. And, uh, so we talked about that.
I'm just concerned about the super authority being more important than I get to with somebody that is.
I don't know, can close it then.
We can, we, yeah, we'll have to close.
No, because then we can't their revised plan, they can't enter any new information.
Well.
Yeah, but we're asking for it before we.
That's kind of like I, I show you where the road is gonna be and where the operating area.
We're not gonna be able to ask them questions on it. Once we close it, we're not gonna be able to ask them. So if we sit there and say, why is it here? Or we can't, where they put it, is it? We can't question them on it anymore.
Yeah.
It kind of puts us in a situation because if any of us seem like, well, maybe it's close to the road and maybe it's close to site. I mean, I just don't want to box us in.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, makes sense. Cause once it's closed, it's done.
And the hearing be closed next? And then we even discuss it or can we have it moved? Another two weeks to discuss it. In other words, can you close the hearing next week after we look at the plans? Close it and then discuss it? Or this?
Yeah, 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 we could do that.
Yeah, we just can't take on new information or question them or take any input from anybody else.
Yeah, that's true. So we would schedule it as continue public hearing with possible blow and then we'd have what we call a workshop. Like number four would be the workshop to discuss it.
We could also, uh, consider a plan on having your member redeveloped. So if you, I think there's.
Yeah, Derek, Derek.
Yeah, would be able to.
And he can watch the video too.
Yeah.
Everything's recorded, so he can watch the video and. Great. So we're gonna continue with that?
So you're good with that? You understand what's going on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, yeah. Um, do you have a date of the September eleventh?
It would be the next meeting.
September eleventh?
Yeah.
We're gonna have a meeting that night?
For eleven, not Juneteenth.
I know. Do you all wanna meet September eleventh? They you wanna do the eighteen?
Eleven is fine to meet.
I would push it, that's pushing without.
Yeah, no, so let's get it done as soon as we can, Derek.
You good?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do September eleven then.
Okay.
And we, we will be receiving a, a notice. Or from the office, no?
No, we're gonna continue it with, it's called a date certain.
Got it.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, go ahead.
So we don't have to advertise it.
Same time.
Same station.
Yeah.
Seven fifteen on September eleventh and we'll see you then. You guys have any other questions?
No. Nope. And then you'll have the new plans for us.
Again, yeah.
Okay, all right. So I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing of special permit number three ten. Site plan approval number sixty-eight for Cal Rolling Hills LLC. Uh, hold that hearing, uh, September eleventh, twenty twenty-three at seven fifteen.
Okay.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, I.
David Dufresne, I.
Charlie Hacker, I.
The motion passes unanimously. The public hearing is continued to September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three at seven fifteen. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is Joe Barnacle, uh, nine forty-two Main Street, map twenty-four lot seven. To discuss steps he needs to convert a space into usable office space with kitchenette and bathroom above the Warren Cash Market. How you doing, sir?
I'm well, how are you?
I'm doing well. All right. So last time we met, we had a question, why it was being referred to us because it seems more of a building issue versus planning issue. So we wanted to have our building commissioner here or find out what was going on. And um, BJ. Can you help us out with understanding why this was referred to us?
Okay, so sometimes if you go to the town website and you just pull up a card, it gives you this representation called an assessment field card. But if you go to the actual property card, it gives you the actual description of this property. It is point one oh of land, maybe classified as a store with a store building built about eighteen eighty, having primary vinyl exterior, one residential unit and one commercial unit, one bath, one half bath, five bedrooms and five rooms and two bedrooms. So I've been approached twice through permitting. Two different ones, but I denied both. For different reasons, I'm building. But also because in our this is, this would be under our bylaws of planning, a pre-existing non-conforming law to current, to be allowed to take one apartment that is above a commercial space and put it into two. That was the first one. Now they've come to me that they're gonna make it a kitchenette and office. Second of all, when I first got here working for the town of Warren, I did a stockwork order because they were over there trying to make two apartments. I went over there because there was initial damage done by, I believe, water damage. And they had to replace the ceiling tiles and the flooring in the commercial unit. I'm gonna guess because probably a hot water tank went or some other leak that caused damage to the commercial space. At that time, I was notified by the contractor that there was work being done upstairs. So because I issued a permit, I was allowed outside. I went upstairs and that's when I noticed that it was being converted to two apartments. Can't do this without permit. I stopped the work. Basically, if you read the card, that's all that was there. There was never two kitchens. There was never two full baths, which you would think if there was, as they're trying to claim two apartments. So in our regulations, it says that in the village district, in the case of two, three, or four family dwellings, the minimum lot size should be six thousand square feet per dwelling unit. This, or the property card has eight thousand. So it brings this being non-conforming to the current zoning, which then requires you to have a, which it says in section, hold on. Um, one point five one, non-conforming single and two-family structure plan, the planning board may, by special permit, allow. So that's when I said, you have to go to the planning board with your site plan, showing them that you can meet all the requirements. Area, parking, you gotta have three parking. It's all laid out here. To see if you will allow a variance to allow two apartments in this. Now, one apartment, residential and one commercial.
So you're looking for a variance from the bylaw then? That would be the ZBA.
Right, but planning, yeah, that initiates the planning part of our planning regulations as well, where there, when there's a change and it states it in the zoning bylaws, then the planning board could give, that's the planning board that could give and allow that.
Cause it says it in the by.
Right, yes, sir. So I, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm just your enforcement. I'm not your, you know, and the way that I read it is it's gotta be a special permit from the planning board.
Now we know.
Yeah, no, this is good.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, you know, I it's, it's been, you know.
So with that said, you would have to apply for a special permit then.
Okay, and I, I just wanna clarify that the work that began years ago with, with any of the work there was not done by me or.
Right, that's, that's fine, but you would have to actually bring it up to code because once you open it up and touch it.
The, the one thing that I, I'm confused of, the, the architect that, um, that the owner hired, um, he pulled up this card that says it is, that it does have two units and two kitchens. So I don't understand how he got it confused.
See which one to that.
I have a Patriots phone that.
Right, where you see that it has two bathrooms. It has two units. Two units, no, no. The units are classified by the assessor, three, two, five and one oh one. Three, two, five means it's a commercial unit. One oh one means it's a residential unit. It does have two units, but they're not two living units.
Okay.
Okay, that's, okay. That's why, that's why, you know, listen. I've been doing this a long time, as you all know, and it's, and Joe, I've talked to you as well. Joe does not have a CSL. Joe's trying to put the permitting through for this and he's currently working on doing, trying to get a license and stuff like this, but he's also got another CSL.
So you don't have a contractor's license?
I'm a registered contractor. I don't have my construction supervisor's license.
No, I'm not a registered contractor.
So you can't.
I'm registered, my HIC registration isn't.
No, the HIC is not a contractor's, construction supervisor's license and you cannot pull permit. That's what David was just asking.
I, I just said I don't.
I, I just said I don't have my CSL.
So who is, who is the contractor that?
There's two people involved. Mike is the CSL holder and Larry.
And who's Mike?
He's someone I've been working with for years.
What kind, what company?
It's, it's his name.
Just Mike?
No, I'm sorry, um.
So Mike, so it sounds like.
So I'm, I'm, Mike, Mike Potaski is the CSL, but Larry, the architect, I thought was the one who has the permit. So I thought then Mike, originally I thought it was.
Well, there, there's a contractor that has to be responsible for the permits and doing the work and ensuring it's done correctly. Okay, so you're basically working as a subcontractor for Mike.
I, I'm, and I'm the project manager for the actual owner.
The CSL has to pull a permit.
Yeah, which Mike does and Mike will be on site for every one of these jobs.
I'm asking for control instruction, which I'm allowed to do in person. Chapter one administrative code. Portion of the building code, so it would have to be a registered design professional who in conjunction. With, you know, he can hire, it's the, it's the registered design professional who will be responsible for the job.
Which we hired. Okay, for five thousand dollars. That's Larry is.
So did he do plans and everything, designs and?
I, I thought they were submitted.
That's all I got and it's not what I need.
Well, you're gonna have to work with. Our building commissioner to make sure she has what she needs.
And I'd just like to state for the record here too, that the state inspector was called when I first shut this job down. Harold Lamy, and he went to the side, saw the conditions and spoke with the owner and told the owner almost exactly what you just said. The building commissioner is telling you what we need to do. You need to follow that instructor. And to this day, that was in the beginning, when I first got here, David, and it's still going on. I keep, I, I've been, I'm just throwing pieces of paper, chapter thirty fours. Yeah, I've been here two years.
So BJ, if you're not getting what you want and you apply for it, we deny it.
I did.
Okay, but we'll deny it too. Because you need to give everything that's required to be a thorough job. And to make sure nobody gets injured by any work you're getting, you guys are doing. We need to know exactly what you're gonna be doing. Um, you're not a licensed contractor for this job. The licensed contractor, we'd have to do that in conjunction with the architect and work with the building commissioner. If, if she's already told you this.
Well, I thought, what, what's the point of a special permit? I thought we needed a special.
Because it requires it by the bylaw, because you're doing something outside. Of what it's, what, what's allowed.
Do you start with the special permit before we work with, with, with BJ?
You wanna have plans ready for us that's also gonna satisfy her. Because we're gonna look at them and we're gonna think, okay, this, because we're not building inspectors. We're gonna say, okay, this looks pretty good, but then if you give them to her and she said ah, then you're, then you stop immediately.
The ar- the architect has to apply to the special permit, the design profession.
That's Larry Tuttle? And they should probably come and present the project.
That's where you start.
Do you have any other questions?
No, no, I think we.
You know what you need to do now, right?
Well, and we were a little confused, so that's why we have BJ here.
And I came in. Me all, Larry, myself and Mike came in. Way after anything was started, so everyone is on different pages. The architects, the CSL, and again, I'm, I'm the, the project manager coordinating with everybody to do, to get this done. And everyone is thinking something different, so now that we know what we have to do, um, we will do it.
I was gonna say, if you're the project manager trying to make sure everybody's working together. Get them working together.
That's the next step.
And, um, just so you know, when you're doing your special permit, there's actually a sheet, check sheet. Make sure you complete the check sheet.
Well, he doesn't, is he doing site plan approval?
Well, I think that's what you have to have, right? You have to see the site. You, you gotta know the parking, you gotta know, you know, it doesn't have a dimension, it doesn't meet the dimensional requirements at this point, so.
It's non-confirmed.
A special permit application, a site plan application and review the checklist. What you have to submit and what you maybe ask away from.
Read through it.
Yeah, okay, I, I, I believe Jill gave it to us last week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is discuss rules and regulations for site plan approvals.
Oh, so, can, can I, do we wanna talk about, start the issue while you're here and then you can go?
Sure.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So.
What's that?
New business.
New business, okay.
So that's new business?
Oh, okay. Oh, I already got it for you. And I wrote a letter.
So as far as your concerns, he's good?
Yeah, it's growth, it's already got growth back. I don't think he was using it. Some time from my, I mean. Then I couldn't even identify where it had been.
So hold on, we're gonna table, we're gonna table the, um, discussion for rules, regulations and site plan approval. And we're gonna take it out of order. And we're gonna go to new business and we're gonna address the letter of compliance with Bill from, from the building inspector. From Michael Starziak to close out his charity account with the treasury. Okay. You guys are good with taking it out of order? And he's done everything to comply with the bylaws?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I'm a little new to this whole gravel pit thing. I mean, you know, I, I think you just wanted verification that there's no further activity and then it's grown and that.
And he doesn't wanna renew it, so, right?
Yeah, he doesn't wanna renew it.
Good with that then?
So unless we have objections, we can release the hearing.
It wasn't put up for a vote?
Well, I talked to our town administrator. He saw, it says, is, if we're not gonna, if we're just accepting it. It, you don't necessarily need to go back. We're just all in agreement. BJ's already approved it.
Yeah, well, how do you say we're all agreement and say yes, that's a vote? Right?
Yeah.
If we all say.
I don't know that we.
I'm in agreement, yes, 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 we just voted.
But that's the thing, I don't think we really have to approve it.
Yeah, you just, you requested a letter of compliance from me. I supplied the letter of compliance. That's shouldn't.
So unless we had an objection or something.
Compliance would signal to, to release the charity.
Yeah, yeah, it's already in motion.
Right, I mean, that's what I understood by reading the bylaw when Joe asked me. I went over it and it just needed my final.
This is really informational.
You know, if someone ever comes back five years of what's going on here, let's say someone tries to start it back up. Oh, no, he didn't renew it. So then you have to start the property. You know, I think that was one of the major problems with sort of the gravel pit is the documentation being kept. Current or, or in the folder so we can use what the standing of any particular gravel pit is or was or.
So without taking a vote. Okay. I have no more concerns. I'm good.
Yeah, I don't have any, I don't have any concerns.
Can I ask one other question? So during this period of. Uh, vacant position, how am I supposed, what do you want me to do like?
Everything, everything. What can you do?
I had that.
Don't, don't ask, don't ask if you don't want the answer. We're working on it. It's posted.
Right.
And we're gonna do our best to try to get as filled as quickly as possible with the most qualified applicant. And we're gonna do our due diligence. We're obviously gonna have you in with the interviews like we did before. So we can make sure that.
Yeah, I was at the end before because I was just getting here, so this time hopefully.
Now, now you're indoctrinated.
Boy, oh boy, I got those cement boots on now.
So we're gonna have to limp along for like a month.
Okay.
And, and we got volunteers. I know Karen said she would volunteer and help out where she can if things are needed.
Yes, and some of the paperwork, sometimes it's nice to have that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can limp along. I'm, I'm not worried about it.
We'll make it work. Just let us know if you need something.
Okay, alright.
Just let Jim know, say, hey, can I get somebody down here for a while or?
Alright.
Well, he knows all the moving parts.
Yeah, he does.
We just yell on it at him when they're, when they're not, when they're not moving anymore, so. Alright, now back to discuss rules and regulations for site plan approvals.
It reminds me, I mean, there are a bunch of sections here. The open door policy is gonna be above the application procedure section. Mainly to make sure people know that there is an open door policy and they come in and talk to us, but what I did for the procedure. Was I had the applicant request a special permit and site plan approval applications and checklist. By the, the planning board secretary or the town clerk. The applicant can request to be put on the agenda for future planning board meeting. Discuss their application to see if everything is in order or if they will need more information before submitting the application to the town clerk. Again, some of this I have to word spell several of this. If the applicant does decide to submit the application, it must be fully completed before submission. The town clerk shall certify the date and time of the application filing and return one copy to the applicant and forward a second copy to the planning board. On the same day. And the date certified by the town clerk should be considered the date on which the application is filed in play. Yeah, that, that seemed to work, right? I mean, I kind of, okay, good, alright, I'll, I gotta play with a couple of things. I don't like having your submission three times in one sentence, but okay. I'm sorry. Play with that a little more and I guess we're done.
Okay, do you have any questions?
No.
Very good. Alright, moving on. So payroll for Jill. Shalafu Miller?
So just tell us, so what, she's getting a week of vacation, is that how that works?
Yeah, so, uh, that is, uh, what she hasn't, you know, been used.
Okay, and that's the seven thirty-seven, is that what that is?
So this is. So this is payroll for Jill Shalafu Miller in the amount of two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. And seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents, thirty-five cents. It includes seven days of earned vacation payout. All in favor? David Dufresne, I? The motion passes again.
There's copies in that folder for you to decide.
The motion passes again, honestly. Okay. Approved and signed petty cash reimbursement for certified mail in the amount of thirty-four dollars and twenty-four cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? David Dufresne, I? Motion passes unanimously. Alright, and then approved and signed August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three minutes. All in favor? David Dufresne, I? Motion passes unanimously. So new business? Anybody have any new business? Anybody have any old business?
I have old business. So we got this letter, um, with Agilitus. They weren't able to find, see now, they weren't able to find any, uh, junk around the property.
Yeah, I seen that a while ago.
And then they can't locate the sign, the town ordering sign, so.
That I actually think Westbrookfield took away. Because it was knocked over into the. Um, drainage ditch. That was there. And I think they worked with Westbrookfield and Westbrookfield just.
They don't have possession of it and are unaware of its location, so. Okay, well, maybe it's in someone's scrap metal bin right now.
It's one of those things that, you know. You know, they knocked it over, but they didn't fix it. They denied knocking it over, even though they were. Tractor tire, uh, tractor tracks going right to it.
Well, maybe as a condition.
But that's also highway. I know Jeremy Olson was working with them, but they keep on, what it is is. They keep on going to Westbrookfield. We talked to them and they're like, yeah, we're talking to Westbrookfield about that. So I don't know, the same thing's happening when Westbrookfield asks them and they say, no, we're talking to Warren about that.
Alright.
But the trash is up there. I'll have to go get more pictures. Where it is, they, they actually have to go up that trail, the river. Along the conservation. You can't see it if you're on the inside of the fence. If they're going up there looking on through the fence. Outside of it, it's all bushes and everything that are there on the fence. You actually have to go outside, you know, out on that road and access it. And it probably didn't do that because it's very difficult to get to and, um, yeah. So I'll get more pictures and let them know.
Maybe we'll get the sign up.
Unless you guys wanna walk up there with me too. It's about three miles from my house.
It's a good walk, good stretch of the legs.
And it hits like that. Yeah. Probably not gonna see in there, so. Jim will come with us too.
The, the other thing, only other thing was, um. Borrego on Crowden Road. I've driven by half a dozen that.
It was closed one day. And now it's open again. I see it opening up again. It actually looks like somebody damaged the fence. I don't think it closes because when it, when it was closed, they had it closed and it was kinda like. So I don't know if something happened to it.
I don't think it ever was exactly level and perfect like it should have.
No, but it wasn't like. It looked damaged, so I don't know. You know, like it damaged or whatever, but you need to know what's going on with it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess they hadn't responded to our email from the other day, or last week.
You should have a phone number to them, right?
We should, they got that, you got that spreadsheet.
We could just call them. Probably the best way. So anybody else have any other business? No? Okay, comments and concerns? Okay, comments and concerns? Any comments and concerns?
I mean, the, the job was posted June, right?
Yes, yeah. So, um, the position description was emailed to everybody uh, on board, um, including BJ, um, you know, BJ, didn't have any problems with it. I took into your, um, all your, your comments and, um, and it's been posted. Uh, it was posted on Friday.
Okay.
Um, so it's on Indeed, it's on the town's website.
Yeah.
Um, it's going into the River News two consecutive meets.
Okay.
Um, starting this Thursday.
Okay.
And running next Thursday as well.
Okay.
Um, and they're due back on September fifteenth. So it gives people, you know, an opportunity to, to apply and get their resumes and cover letters in, um. You know, I, they, we posted it with a range, the range being.
That's, that's only two weeks though. Someone, it's not gonna go in until, if someone doesn't see it in the next issue.
Right.
That gives them just a few days to get their.
So it will go in, it's gonna go in for this Thursday.
Thirty, thirty.
Thirty first.
Seven.
And a seven.
Seven.
And so it gives them over a week.
A week, okay, yeah, alright, okay. Yeah, if they're interested, we could be.
Honestly, I think we'll probably get more from Indeed, like what's, what's the track record right now?
Right now, I, uh, most of the hires that I have been involved in, they came from Indeed.
Yeah, that seems.
You know.
The River News name, you know.
Right.
Did he go up on mass, he just hold two, last times? Was that it?
I thought. Not for a position like this, like with town administrator, we did.
We did on sewer, we did on, we, we also did for assistant assessor.
Yeah.
On there.
Okay.
Um.
But usually very specific things. This is more.
Yeah, secretary.
Secretarial work.